Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina. And Commissioner Isa Flores.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a call.
Most of you to excuse the absent members.
Second.
Only favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Pledge of allegiance and certification.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together. We thank you for all that we have in our city, in our community. And we thank you for all you allow us to do in our personal and professional lives. We pray that you guide our meeting today and let us embrace your directions so that we may conclude with meaningful objectives for all concerned. In your name we trust. Amen.
Item two, public testimony. Hilda? Okay, item three, public hearings. All right. City manager report.
Mayor Commissioner, we're going to move over to item, uh... 4C.
4C. Yuri.
Good afternoon, Commission.
Good afternoon.
Mayor. We're really excited. We have a special guest today. Yuri Gonzalez here for the Record Office of City Communications Director, PIO. We have Senator Chuy Nojosa. We also have Terry Canales. But we have their special names because they also serve in very important boards. So we have the Chairman of House Transportation Committee, Mr. Terry Canales. If you can please stand to be recognized.
Yes, sir.
And our Vice President of the House Transportation Committee, Mr. Senator Chuy Nojosa. Please stand to be acknowledged. Finance, finance, that's right. Well, we want to thank you for being here today. It's an honor. We also know that Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez and you and Mr. Terry Canales have been critical in important projects in the region. And one of those projects is the IBTC project. There's many people that are not familiar with the project and want to learn more about the project. So we have a short video. And after that, if you can please share some words. I know that Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez is very proud of this project as well, but it took a team effort. It took many, many leaders here in the Rio Grande Valley to make this possible. So let's watch this video and then we'll have some time for some words.
The city of FAR is on the rise along with the Rio Grande Valley. In late June, Texas Governor Greg Abbott announced his directive to the Texas Transportation Commission allocating $150 million in funding to the International Bridge Trade Corridor, IBTC, a project that has long been a priority for the city of FAR.
Well, FAR has been a strong advocate of the IBTC corridor. The bridge in FAR is, as you know, is one of our major arteries for trade, making sure that their voice is heard at the Capitol. FAR has been a leader in helping bring and keep these issues at the forefront so that they finally come to fruition.
Since 2015, Mayor Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez and the city commission has met with multiple state legislators and federal members of Congress at the FAR International Bridge, expressing the need for the IBTC project, emphasizing on border infrastructure needs. The state of Texas now understands the importance of all reports of entry along the Rio Grande Valley.
Clear leader on this project was Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez. He was up in Austin on a constant basis advocating for the IBTC project. He spoke with the delegation, the RMA, along with Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, had been advocating and pushing to build the IBTC project. And we started, but we could never get the full funding. So now with the $150 million, that's a huge boost. And now we'll get it done and finished and make it part of the state highway system.
The IBTC is truly a regional project that will connect five ports of entry to the northbound corridor, infrastructure that is vital to the success and economic development and the movement of trade and commerce in our region. After the creation of the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, RGVMPO, this once local project catapulted as a top priority for the Rio Grande Valley, spearheaded by the founding RGVMPO chairman, Mayor Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez.
We're hopeful that that's a precursor for additional projects. I know that Mayor Hernandez had been advocating for that money and that support for quite some time, both before he served as Chairman of the MPO and while he served as Chairman and since he's stepped off as Chairman. So want to congratulate him and thank Chairman Canales and Senator Nojosa for their support.
Making sure that we have a corridor that will funnel the commercial traffic not only bolsters community safety, but it also bolsters the speed at which we can move commerce through our ports of entry.
Mayor Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez mentioned crucial key individuals for the outstanding support, emphasizing the critical team effort to push forward because projects like these can take years to get funded. In a quote he stated, "We would like to extend our appreciation to House Transportation Committee Chairman, Texas State Representative Terry Canales. Vice Chairman of Finance, Texas State Senator Juan Chuy Nojosa. Transportation Chairman, Texas State Senator Robert Nichols. TexDOT Chairman Bruce Bug. TexDOT Commissioner Alex Mead. RGVMPO Chairman Judge Eric Trevino. For their support and dedication in making the IBTC project a reality."
This trade will bring additional billions, but also create hundreds of new jobs and produce a growth in our economy. And we'll grow the infrastructure that we need not only here in the valley, but further north from the valley.
Once again, that was Vice Chairman of Finance, of course, Senator Juan Chuy Nojosa. Thank you very much. And we want to welcome you to the podium to share a few words.
Well, thank you. And first of all, I have to tell you the video say it all. I don't have much to add. But I will say this, that it was teamwork. There was coalition of cities, City of Edinburgh, City of McAllen, City of FAR. But the City of FAR really took the lead in pushing, advocating for the IBTC corridor. And one of the key reasons is the FAR bridge. We all recognize the role and importance of the FAR bridge. And Governor Abbott, of course, came through, but throughout the session, I think Chairman Terry Canales and I advocated very strongly. But I have to recognize, I guess, the unsung people many times, the staff people who do all the work. For the City of McAllen, you have Cindy Garza Reyes, and you had Michael Vargas. They were up there so much time that we thought they were part of my staff. But in reality, this is a real big plus for us here in the valley. The bridge itself, the international bridge, would not only benefit the city of FAR, create more jobs, take the big trucks out of our school districts, take the trucks out of our downtown traffic, and put them much straight out to the corridor, to the expressway. And to us, it's a big win. Because $150 million, it's almost like a Kickstarter, in a sense. It'll take more money than that, but we are confident it'll become part of the state highway system where we'll be eligible and receive formal funding. So I'm just very happy and I'd like to really thank my colleague, Chairman Terry Canales, who is a tireless, tireless advocate for the valley and transportation, but not just here in the valley, but throughout the state of Texas. Mayor Hernandez, thank you. You're like a hammer. I always call him the Hammer, or Martillo, because he goes up there and makes his case. Team FAR, when they make the presentation up in Austin, they're prepared. They got their numbers together, they got their documents together, they got the points together. It makes such a difference for us and the legislature when we have the backing and support of our local public officials and leaders. So thank you very much, and I look forward to, again, continuing to help the growth of our transportation needs for, not only for FAR in the valley, but for all of South Texas and the state. But thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Nojosa. And although you said that the video, we elaborated a lot of information, we are live, so we thank you for these words. We're connecting with our audiences. So now let's invite Chairman of the House Committee, Mr. Terry Canales.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chairman.
Councilman. Regado, good to see you. Y'all got the right city attorney in case you need a...
Thank you, sir.
Somebody knows what he's doing, you found him. So thank you for inviting me. So there's quite a bit of backstory, but I'll tell you quickly, in 2013 when I was elected, this was one of the things that was laid out as an important project. I immediately recognized it, but didn't have the local support. Mayor Hernandez, when he was elected, immediately made this the priority. And as the senator will tell you, he's tenacious, to say the least, never stopped. And so Cindy never stopped calling our office. But this was the first opportunity in many, many years that we'd ever had because of this budget surplus. And so this session, we tried to formulate a plan. And the plan was to sell the corridor in a language that the people that write the budget. So my counterparts are Republicans, and they like to hear border security. And this corridor is border security. Many of these trucks spider off into the rest of the nation. And without funneling them in one direction, we lose the speed at which we can move commerce, and we also lose the actual sight and line of sight of those trucks. And so we can't necessarily control those. And so basically positioning ourselves and showing the Republican delegation and the House delegation that this was a border security issue, coupled with the fact that there was a large border, large budget surplus. So I went into this session explaining the plan to the senator, and the senator agreed, and that's where we started, was trying to position ourselves as border security. And it went over very well with the House members. We were going to ask for 500 million, and that's where we started. We quickly learned that that was going to be a problem, and they weren't going to give us 500 million. And we ultimately, after speaking with the chairman, who I have to give a lot of thanks to, Bruce Bug Jr., said, "Terry, this makes sense." I had to spell it out, we had to lay it out, we had multiple meetings, multiple dinners. And he says, "This is business. This is how it should be run. It's crazy that we're not already doing this." He couldn't understand that trucks move stoplight by stoplight just to get commerce through FAR. And I said, "That's all the bridges, Chairman." And so he committed to me, including Senator Robert Nichols, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Transportation, committed, he says, "If you don't get this money during the budget, we will wear out TexDOT." He says, "They've got the money, we will get it for you." And so I'll tell you a story that Mayor Hernandez was up there, and I know that him and Cindy had the Senator Nichols in the back hall, and they were explaining to him, and he flips over his notebook and says, "It was my hand drawn notes," and I was showing him the bridge. And they said, "You've got somebody fighting just as hard in the House side and on the Senate side." So ultimately, when we realized we weren't going to get what we wanted, Senator Nichols said, "What I need you to focus is on is your 20 million for the bridge." And we got that 20 million, and it wasn't till, what, two months after, a month and a half after session ended, that the governor had made that. I will tell you that with maps that were given to us by Cindy, and we blew up. And most people don't have the access, but because I serve and Senator Nojosa serve as chairs, the governor meets with every one of the chairs about our priorities and how we can help. Well, I only had one priority when I walked in there, and it was a four by eight, basically poster board that big of the IBTC corridor. And I laid it out for him and the information that was provided by the mayor that they've been hammering away at. And so I will tell you that it is the relentlessness of Mayor Hernandez, the senator, and fighting for you guys and fighting for a region because that's who we are. You know, we've got city, individual cities, but the culture that Senator Nojosa, myself, and everybody's tried to foster is a culture of regionalism. Because this IBTC corridor doesn't just affect FAR. It affects Edinburgh, it affects McAllen, it affects everybody, it will affect people in New York City. And so the reality is, moving forward, we have to focus as a region on what we can do to bolster the nature of our trade. And our trade, Mexico just became America's largest trading partner. We have always been Texas's largest trading partner. And so so goes the Rio Grande Valley's economy, so goes the rest of the world. Because when the rest of the world has been in a recession or a depression, we're not. And that's because of our trade and the nature and our geographical location to the Mexico-Texas border. It is the heartbeat and the lifeblood of not only our nation, but this community. And making sure that we don't demonize or stop trade, but make sure it's faster. And I'll leave you with this. When the governor shut down the border for advanced safety inspections, four days cost $9 billion. Nine billion, four days. The converse is also true. If we're able to effectuate safety but speed it up, you can make more money. So by slowing it down, you lose, but by speeding it up and prioritizing safety and using these corridors, we can bolster not only our economy, but the rest of the United States. This is a win, 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 a game changer. I want to thank the mayor, thank the council, and thank everybody who spent tireless hours. It's an honor to have been a part of it and helped carry the ball across the goal line, Mayor. Thank you for everything you do. You truly are a blessing to the city of FAR. And your tenaciousness in making sure that we're all doing our jobs paid off. And so thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to make a few comments before. Thank you for, you gentlemen, coming by today. I know you guys extremely busy schedule, Senator, of course, the Chair of Transportation, and you take care of the state, I know. And I say that with honesty because I've seen you firsthand, and you do represent us in Rio Grande Valley, but you've always done what's in the best interest of the state. And that goes without saying because I've seen it in action. There's true, there's a lot of people pulling on your coattails, I'm sure, bugging you at midnight, and not everything is, can be done. But I appreciate how you prioritize things. But also, I realize you were there since 2013. I thought you had been there serving longer, Terry, to be honest. But we started almost the same time, and, you know, the city learns by observing. We don't speak much, and we don't interpress much, and that's on purpose. But we do emulate, or we watch what people are doing, and we look at role models. And that's what you guys represent for us, the city. You guys are role models of what elected officials should be doing in both character integrity and in family values and what you have. And I didn't fully appreciate that until I spent so much time, especially this session, with Cindy and Mike in Austin. And I spent quite a bit of time with you gentlemen, and I realize on how you balance your life with your family and how they are a priority. And I'm glad that I saw that they are your priority, and everything else falls second. Because without family, it's nothing. And the reason I bring that up is that we consider you family. We consider you part of the FAR family. And we're so delighted that you were able to be elected and reelected, and also all the accolades that go behind, because it's huge. I mean, if anybody ever does an internet search on your successes, each of you individually, it is really a large volume of data they'll find. And not once has it been self-serving, where you're in the media, you have to be, actually, we have to drag you. I literally have to drag you into the press slide, both of you gentlemen, even at the MPO and other places, because that's not who you guys are. You just like and truly love doing what you do. But it's true, the IBTC was a priority for the governor's office and also for us when we merged. And we merged under your guidance, and a lot of people don't know those stories and background, but you both wanted the MPO to merge because we were leaving money on the table. And our budget has exploded now at the MPO. But that was under your leadership to rally the teams together. So yes, I was involved with it, but so were the other mayors, and I'm glad they were as well, but under your guidance and always under, on your shadow. And we're very proud of it. But IBTC took off. We absolutely have needed money for our bridge. We're very responsible with taxpayer money, but sometimes the interest rates and cost of capital go up, and you gentlemen recognize that all across the state. And we've always been there knocking at the door with data, with Cindy and Mike, showing you that we're not asking for handouts, we're just asking for what is fair, since we generate so much money for the state. And you've always been there, and your colleagues as well. So on behalf of the city and the mayor's office, we're very delighted that you're here, and I appreciate your leadership and your patience with our staff and everything you do for the city and the state of Texas, and quite frankly, for the nation, because they benefit as well. The IBTC is going to be a wonderful project for the entire region, as you stated already. It does affect Mission McAllen, us, Donna, everybody is affected by it, including Edinburgh, above all. And so with those 150 million, it's a great kickstart. We had already given 20 million at the MPO. It is likely we're going to get more by the end of the week. And it's all in the best interest of our population, as you already mentioned, Chairman, and Senator, public safety, right? We don't need semis next to our cars, we don't need them next to our school buses, we don't want any more accidents. We want them to move quickly, and hopefully their companies make money and deliver all the products all over the US. And we're delighted that you were historically instrumental also, not only in merging the MPO, but on this great project for the entire nation. So congratulations to both of you, and I thank your families for everything, all the sacrifices they do on your behalf and allowing you to be in office. So thank you very much. All right. Let's take a picture with our group.
Sir, we're going to go over to the broadband award. I'm going to ask Jose to come up and speak to that.
Sure.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
Commission, city manager. So again, this is our next award that we received. This was awarded to the city of FAR for the TeamFAR.net project by the Smart City Connect organization, their national or international organization that highlights smart city projects. They held their conference back in May, and the city of FAR was one of their international recipients in regards to highlighting smart city projects. So again, here's another trophy to be able to put it in our awards plaque for the city to showcase. And again, it's just one of these things that we look at what other cities are doing, but being able to showcase and put our name in very good company along with international awardees from all over the world was very, you know, amazing. So thank you for everything.
Well, thank you, Jose, and your staff. I mean, you guys are just, you know, it's amazing what you, how this project started just by doing the right thing. Just by doing the right thing for your fellow residents. And now it's just blossoming to something outstanding for the entire nation. You're being used as a model, you're being highlighted, you and your staff, right? I mean, we may give you the resources, but it's led by you and all your staff, and it's just amazing how, and I'm just so proud of you and your team, that just by doing the right thing, you're being recognized now.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Again, we couldn't have been here without the entire team. Definitely.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I had some comments. Sorry, Jose, I tried to reach you during the weekend, never get a call back or a text back. But I got some questions on the broadband. And taking the opportunity that you're here.
Sure.
I know last time we spoke, we were talking about how many houses we were able to do per week. And at the moment, you mentioned that we only had enough kids to do 500 houses, right? So how are we doing right now? I know we're getting awards and smart cities and stuff, but...
Yes, definitely.
So how are we doing now with that?
We have 800 kids sitting in the warehouse. The staff already started issuing out all the PSJA addresses to both contractors. Literally, that's what we just finished before coming to this meeting. We switched in regards to being able to deploy mass amounts of equipment the way we're previously provisioning equipment. We worked with our manufacturer, and there's an alternative method, which is how we transition now. So we actually already scheduled Wednesday morning, both of our contractors, so they can learn the new method of installing homes going forward.
All right, and that's the only thing. I just want to make sure. I know PSJA is ready to start school soon. And last time that we spoke, and I was supposed to get an update, so thank you for the update.
No problem.
These are the kits?
Yes. The kits is basically all the components that go into a home. So the underground cable, the indoor cable, the enclosures, all the pieces of equipment. It's about 10 items that go in the kit.
That's what you call a kit? Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioner, we do have a video on this, real quick, so that we can go ahead and run through that.
Okay.
By now, you've heard of TeamFAR.net, the city of FAR's own fiber optic project. The project brings major solutions to closing the digital divide, particularly in the city's most rural areas. But where does the project stand? Today, TeamFAR.net is expanding across FAR, providing internet service in hundreds of neighborhoods.
We do have over 1,200 customers online in South FAR. Now, anybody who lives in South FAR, it's a matter of just signing up.
Be on the lookout because crews are wrapping up underground fiber optic installation. This means that once phase four of the project ends, more homes will be connected to the TeamFAR.net internet service, a six-phase project.
We also are continuing to work in North FAR, and as construction is progressing, additional neighborhoods will be coming on board.
We believe that FAR and all its residents within the boundaries of FAR deserve the best of anything, and in this case, it's broadband.
Our award-winning broadband project has national recognitions, and it serves as a model for other cities across the US. Our latest achievement includes the Smart Cities Award, highlighting TeamFAR.net's innovative and influential impact.
That is an actual international recognition where they designate 50 projects for this smart city awards. And it's been great to be recognized for these initiatives that the city of FAR is standing out.
The Smart Cities Award is in addition to a growing list of prestigious achievements right here in the city of FAR.
It is true, we're getting recognitions at a national level and state level, there's no question, and it makes us very proud. But I always make it very clear in those presentations that the priority has always been and will continue to be the residents of FAR.
TeamFAR.net is more than an internet provider. It's a solution that pushes economic empowerment while promoting social inclusion for everyone.
All right, very nice, Yuri. Summarized it very well. Can we get that award and have a photo? Yeah, you can come up here. Yeah, it's great.
All right, Mayor Commissioner, we have several events of interest that are going to be coming up that our staff has worked very hard on. The first is going to be the Building and Code Compliance Block Party that'll take place on Thursday, July 20th, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the Development and Research Center, which is located at 850 West Dicker Road. It's a free event, a lot of food and fun for the community, so we'd like to welcome everyone to come out and enjoy. Next, our Parks and Recreation Department will be doing the Lion King Junior Play on July 20th, 21st, and 22nd at PSG North High School Auditorium, located at 500 East Nolana. Doors open at 7:00 PM, and the show starts at 7:30 PM. Children are going to be charged $3 and adults $5. So again, we'd like to invite the community to come out and enjoy. Next, we have our Parks Department who worked on the Pink Paradise Pool Party, which will take place on July 22nd from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the FAR Aquatic Center, located at 1,000 South First Street. And we do have a video clip on this one, if we can go ahead and play that. And we do have a video clip on this one, if we can go ahead and play that.
Very nice.
Again, we'd like to invite the community to come out and enjoy. We also have the Chamber...
Are you guys going to play the Barbie movie at the same time?
Udi, why don't you come up and...
Hi, it's me again, Udi Gonzalez for the record, Office of City Communications Director. From a marketing standpoint, for the City of Farr, the Media Department has been working closely with our Events Coordinator, Vanessa Soto. And what we've been trying to do is engage with the community in a way where we're not just having the facility open and just promoting the time slots, but more, in words of connecting with the audiences, understanding consumer behavior, understanding what's happening in society right now, understanding what people like, and trying to create events that have a hype around something that's happening right now. For example, the biggest summer blockbuster movie, which is...
Transformers?
Barbie.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. And so, what better way to promote our facilities? The Farr Aquatic Center remains and continues to be one of the biggest attractions for the summer right here in the City of Farr. It's a free ticketed event. Not everybody has the opportunity to go to the island with these outrageous prices. So, we just want to make our Farr Aquatic Center attractive. And we're taking these ideas not only from our Farr residents, but with employees that work for the City of Farr. And that was one of the ideas. Let's throw the Pink Paradise Pool Party and just have the theme around this movie that actually premieres that same weekend. I don't work for the movie industry, but it's just, you know, it's, it's nice to know that we have events that other cities are not having and that we are being creative, innovative, and we just want to do things different here.
I think it's a great idea, it's very nice, very colorful. And I'm sure a lot of people grew up with Barbie, to be honest, I know. And so, I think it's a good link to have it that way. I just wanted to see what Bobby's going to be wearing.
Kents are invited as well. Kents, this is open for families, parents, moms, dads. Yes, so, the Nolana is 1204 Nolana. This is in the north side. We will have 300 tickets available at 9:00 in the morning. And we'll also have 300 tickets available for those working parents after 5:00, 5:00 o'clock, starting at 6:00. So, again, the capacity will be 600. And I know it's a free event, but we have to work on, you know, having the right staff, having the right team. And just for the logistics side of it, we're opening it for 600 people this coming weekend.
And it restricts your Farr residents, right?
No, this is open to anyone. This is open to anyone. And again, tickets will be available starting tomorrow at 9:00. And it's a free ticketed event. And we'll be doing updates on social media. If people have additional questions, we'll be posting everything on our social media platforms.
All right.
All right, thank you.
The next event that we have was put together by the Chamber, and it's the Back to the Future Festival, which will be on Saturday, July 29th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM in downtown Farr. So, again, just another event that people could come out. There'll be music, there'll be a lot of entertainment for the community to come out and enjoy during that time. So, we're excited about that and want to thank all the staff that has worked diligently to put this together for the community.
Marcel, do you want to say anything about this?
Hi, good afternoon, Marcela Vela, Chamber President, for the record. This is the, actually, going to be the second annual Back to the Future Festival. We had it last year, and it was very successful. This is 80s-themed, and we implement, we work really closely with the Parks and Recreation Department. We implement live music, 80s music, a vendor market focused on items that are more, you know, dealing with the 80s. And yeah, this is a free event, it's for the community. We invite everybody to come out and, and join us and, and enjoy some, some fun.
Because I know you're very fluent in Spanish. Can you say this Spanish?
Yes, claro que sí. Este, este es el evento que vamos a tener aquí en, en la Ciudad de Farr, el 29 de julio. Es un evento, es el segundo que hacemos, el, el segundo festival. El primero que hicimos fue muy exitoso, entonces decidimos hacerlo de nuevo. Estamos colaborando con el Departamento de Parques y Recreación. Y va a ser un, un evento gratis para la comunidad, donde nos vamos a enfocar en, en los 80s. Y, y vamos a tener música en vivo, comida, vendedores, este mercado. Y pues invitamos a la comunidad a que, a que nos acompañe.
Great, excelente.
Yes, thank you.
And the last event we have coming up is our Farr National Night Out, which will be on Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Farr Town Center, located at 500 North Jackson Road. This is put on by our Police Department to help foster positive police and community relations. Chief Gonzalez and his staff have done a great job of working with various departments to make sure that this happens, it's something that we do every year. Chief Gonzalez, would you like to say a few words on this?
Sure. We have, it's a free admission, free, free event for everyone. So, we'll also be passing out some school supplies as well. So, we partnered also with our different departments from the city as well. So, we'll have informational booths, a time to also meet and greet officers, but not only from our department, but from other agencies as well. We have food vendors that we've also lined up. So, if you're hungry out there, you can enjoy some great food while you're out there as well, as well as different informational booths that we have from the different agency, different departments we have at the department. So, we, we welcome everybody, again, family-oriented event. We hope to see everyone there, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, August 1st.
All right.
All right, we're going to move to item 4A, Submission of the Third Quarter 2022-2023 City of Farr Investment Report. If you all have any questions, Carla will be glad to answer them.
Do you have any comments, Carla? Everything good? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next item, 4B, Submission of Sales Tax Collection Report for July 2023. On this one, we saw a 5.82% increase from last year during this time. We're ranked ninth amongst our neighboring cities, and we've seen a 0.97 year-to-date true growth. Next item is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right. And let's see, so, in a percentage of section 551.071 through 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, we're hereby going to executive session, the time being 4:40. Time is, time is 5:43, we're back in open session? Let's see, where are we? We're in, we're on 6?
6A.
6A. Okay, 6A, Consideration and Action of Any Resolution, Appointing, Reappointing Five Members to the Keep Farr Beautiful Committee. Do you have any?
Yes, sir. Staff recommends reappointment of Mari Caballero and Romeo Robles Jr., and then new members Mildred Escobedo, Rolando Pérez, and Laura De La Garza.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 5B, Consideration and Action of Any Resolution Suspending the August 23rd, 2023 effective date of the Statement of Intent of Texas Gas Service Company to Increase Rates Within Incorporated Areas of Its Service Territory. Okay?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 6C, Consideration and Action of Any on a Resolution Declaring 24-Hour Vehicles from the Farr Police Department Fleet as Surplus Property and Authorizing the Sale of Said Vehicles Via Enterprise Fleet Management Incorporated?
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 6D, Consideration and Action of Any on a Resolution Declaring, Declaring Surplus Items and Equipment from the Farr Police Department and Authorizing the Sales of Such Items Via Gov Deals?
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. 7A, Administrative, Consideration and Action, if any, on request from, what? Every year, Adonis, representing HDZ Holdings LLC, filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission for a Change of Zone from a Single Family Residential District R1 to a Residential Multi-Family District, RMF. The property is ziggyly described as 5.2 cent five acres, more or less, out of Lot 129 Kelly, Farr Subdivision, in Farr, Hidal County, Texas. The property's physical address is 3155 North Veterans Boulevard, COZ number 230606.
Move for denial.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a real quick note, that's in reference to our ordinance. That's what the denial's about, the denial's for. Because in referencing our ordinance, so, just in case they come back to you, Kim, that way you can refer them back to the ordinance. Okay?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, denied. 7B, Consideration and Action of Any Appointing City Manager?
Interim?
Interim, some, excuse me, let me correct that. 7B, Consideration and Action of Any and Appointing, Interim City Manager?
So move.
Interim City Manager being Jonathan Flores?
Jonathan Flores.
Mr. Jonathan Flores. Okay, now I'll take a, a motion, please.
So move.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations, sir.
Appreciate it.
The big chair. All right, let's see. Purchasing, 8A, Consideration and Action of Any on Authorizing Farr Police Department to Purchase Two? That's two. 2023 Ford Transit 15 Passenger Vans Using Operation Stone Garden Grant Number 30, 3173108 Funds.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Contracts and Agreements, 9A, Consideration and Action of Any on 2023-2024 School Resource Officer-Policing Agreement between Vanguard Academy and the Farr Police Department?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 9B, Consideration and Any, Consideration and Action of Any on Amendment Number Three in the Amount of $750,000 for Time Extension and Supplemental Fee for Construction Management Service for the City of Farr's Citywide Fiber Optic Broadband Connectivity?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 9C, Consideration and Action, if any authorize the City Manager to enter an agreement with Border Infrastructure Consulting for Professional Infrastructure Lobbying Services in Mexico?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 9D, Consideration and Action, if any authorize the City Manager to Award the City of Farr Fiber Optic Network Phase 5A Project to STS Underground LLC from Brownsville, Texas, through the Interlocal Purchasing System, otherwise known as TIPS, Cooperative Contract Number 211001, for the amount of $3,320,354.33.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 9E, Consideration, Consideration and Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Award a Service Contract for the Five-Year Consolidated Plan of Goals and Strategies for Housing and Community Development for the, for the City of Farr to Claude Burst, who's that? Consulting Group from Landover, Maryland, for the amount not to exceed $39,964.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Two.
Do we skip two?
Yes, we do.
Two and three?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, everybody. Time is 5:48.